Go ahead and get started for a public hearing. This time, I will ask for a roll call.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Richards.
Present.
Let the record show we have six present with one absent. Counselor Gorley is on a personal matter this evening. Will be attended both special work session and or the public hearing, excuse me, and the council meeting. I will go ahead, and this is going to be a public hearing to consider modifications of adoption of mythology for complete system development charges. This time, I will go ahead and open up with a disclosure statement. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to an issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have any questions, please wait until the appropriate time and then direct your questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so that recorder knows who is speaking. I will do this all at one time. Declaration, City Council. Does any of the council members have any personal bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information? I'll start this in.
No.
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 No. No.
Record shows no counselor has any personal bias, conflict of interest, or any ex parte information regarding this. At this time, I will turn it over for staff report for review of application.
If I could, I apologize, we should have went over this with you prior. Can we read that announcement in case anybody is out there on the record that may want to take part in the public hearing?
You can look up page here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's a big thing right here. Oh, okay. My apologies, I'll go ahead and read them. Since we do have public that is going to be coming in online via the Internet, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for just public meetings. Thank you to everyone who is joining us this evening. For members of this public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instruction to help in case you have or you are new to using Microsoft Teams. To take part. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow on your screen now. Maybe in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, or it may need to click on the three dots to see an extended drop-down menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during this meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, you enter your name, address, phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you may be called on to upon to speak at any point during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner to indicate your desire to speak. It's equivalent of raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone who who may wish to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they would like to address with the council. In the interest of speaking, excuse me. Any time speaker should not speak the point. Instead, they use speak with their point or this is the. Speaker be alive three minutes. Any attention to that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or the. Those joined by phone will note be noted by the moderator for. Chairperson also speak at appropriate time. Act, the meeting is online, excuse public behavior. There does not retain. Those retain right to have. Move from the meeting as the council rules.
Mr. Mayor. It seems a couple of our speakers got connected to a wrong meeting, so we're pulling them over now, so it'll should just be another minute.
We'll go ahead and continue. Again, we'll start off with staff report.
As you're undoubtedly aware, and but for new counselors, system development charges is something we've been working on for the last year. And the way it works is, well, it's a fairly long process and I'll, I believe Deb Galardi, one of our consultants, will be kind of explaining how this, having a brief presentation on how how SDCs work. But this has been a, this is essentially a way that new development helps put in the money for infrastructure that old development has already paid for. And to pay their fair share of that capacity. So the meeting tonight, the public hearing tonight, is the first time that the public has had an opportunity to weigh in on the methodology, the document that's in your packet. And so the purpose of the meeting tonight is to hear from any members of the public who have comments on that methodology and allow them to ask questions. And then you are also free to ask questions about the methodology and so that we can make sure that that's understood. At this time, I think it's probably best if we start with the presentation from Deb Galardi. Deb, do you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, so I'm going to try to share my screen. And so you can see. A PowerPoint. Hopefully, let's see. There it is, okay. Can you see that?
Brandon, does she have the ability to share in this meeting? We're just seeing your your camera, Deb.
Okay. Let's try this.
There we go, that's something.
Oh, you can see, oh, you can see it now?
No, oh, sorry, that was Brandon.
Oh. All right, well. Uh, show me. Do you have a copy of it?
You have a copy of it here if it doesn't work.
That would be great, why don't we go with that option? Not sure.
I emailed the presentation, you're pulling it up, okay. Technology is not our friend tonight.
Yeah, and there was a citizen sort of hanging out on the other link that I was on too, so I hopefully there's a way to get that person over to this meeting also.
I hope so. Oh, Brandon's taking taking care of that.
Right.
All right, it looks like we have. Your presentation up here.
Okay, I can't see it, so I will, but that's okay, I can just. Oh, there it is. Now I see it. Yep. Okay, let me. There we go, okay. All right, well, good evening. Let's go to the next slide. I'm going to cover a short presentation to make sure that everybody is on the same page with respect to just a brief overview of SDCs, the Oregon SDC statute requirements. That relate to how we can charge, what costs we can recover, and how we charge SDCs, and then the, just a summary of the updated SDCs that the study developed. And a little bit of information to give you some context of how those numbers fit in with surrounding communities and others in the state. So let's go to the next slide. So the SDCs are fees assessed to new development only. That includes additions to existing development and change of use. So these are not utility rates, ongoing charges, they are assessed one time upfront at the time of new development. They, the statutes, the Oregon law was for, that provides a framework for the SDCs. The purpose of that law is to provide an equitable funding for orderly growth and development. You need infrastructure in order to be able to accommodate growth, the SDCs help pay for that infrastructure. There also is some provisions in the statutes there. There's a lot of flexibility within the statutes, but there are certain parameters with respect to the methodology. And one of those relates to the different components of the fee. So you can see here there are three components. The first is the reimbursement fee, and that is the portion of the SDC that is designed to recover the cost of existing facilities, things that the city has already built, that have capacity available for growth. The other component is the improvement fee, and that is the forward-looking. Fee that is to recover capital improvements that are included in an adopted list generally comes from master plans or capital improvement plans, transportation system plans. That are specifically needed to expand capacity for growth. So at any given time in in your infrastructure system, you probably have facilities that have available capacity, meaning they were built size to accommodate existing development and growth. And you have a project list that has improvements that are needed to expand certain components of the system. The two of those together represent how you will meet the system needs of future growth, and so you can recover costs of both in the SDCs. And the methodologies that we've developed looked at both existing facilities and planned improvements. The last component is the compliance fee, and basically the statutes say, recognize that the city will incur costs, like the costs of hiring consultants, to help develop the methodology. And other costs associated with tracking SDC revenue, budgeting, accounting kind of things, that you can also use SDC revenue to pay for. Okay, next slide, please.
Deb, I did give you control of the screen too, so that you can.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay, let me try that. See.
The arrows, the arrow key should work for you.
The arrow key.
Could be.
Tried down, but maybe you should just run it for me. If that works. Okay. The basic methodology for developing the SDCs is pretty simple. At least the math is. We we determined what the costs are, as I just described, the grow, the existing facility, the future improvement costs. We determine that for each system specifically. We divide it by the number of growth units over the planning period, and usually we're looking at a 20-year planning period consistent with your system plans. And we come up with a cost per unit. So those units may be equivalent dwelling units, they may be volume-related, like in the case of water. You're planning for a certain amount of additional water demand, and then we calculate what the cost of each unit, each gallon of of new, you know, capacity in the water system is and price per gallon. And then to determine an SDC for an individual development, we multiply that unit cost by the number of units of each development that comes to pull a permit at the city. So pretty simple math, cost divided by units, and then determine the units for each development. Of course, the devil's in the details, and one of the the details is how we go about determining the costs. So let's go to the next slide. Here again, we look to the system plans to identify the, the system plans provide not only the capital improvement project list, but they also help to identify any, how existing and new development will benefit from the new facilities. And so we can only include in the SDCs the cost of expanding capacity for future growth. And so that can include both new facilities, but also upgrades to existing facilities. So if you're going to expand a pump station or add some additional components to the treatment system, those would be capacity expansion kind of improvements. You can see it the off to the right, the total costs that we have determined to be eligible for SDCs for each system. And you can, the first number is the improvement, that's the future-looking component of the fee. And the second component is any costs associated with the existing facilities that would be the reimbursement component. And so you can see for sewer, for example, that most of the costs associated with growth are going to be related to future improvements, because your plant, your treatment plant is basically at capacity. You're building a new, larger treatment system to accommodate growth. So most of the cost is going to come in the form of improvements, future improvements. Water is kind of the opposite, because you already invested in a treatment production facilities that accommodate future growth with some improvements. But the majority of the cost is coming in the form of the reimbursement fee. For streets, about the same total cost, and again, very, in this case, it's entirely future improvements. And then for stormwater and parks, there's both a improvement component and a reimbursement component slightly more related to the reimbursement. You can see that the water and sewer are the the largest in total costs that we're trying to recover, with streets right up there as well, and storm and and parks a little bit less. Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. So these are the costs that we're trying to recover through the SDCs. And if you click that again, should go to the next slide. So from those costs and the units that are projected in terms of the future growth over a 20-year, again, a 20-year planning period. So we're not trying to recover all that revenue just within a five to 10-year period. This is a longer-term look, because that's how you do your planning, and facilities are sized to accommodate growth generally over a 20-year planning period or sometimes longer. But you can see the current SDC in the first column, and then the reimbursement improvement component, compliance fee, which is the smallest portion of the fee, and then the total. So as I mentioned, the water wastewater are that had the the most cost associated with meeting future needs. And so those SDCs are significantly higher than stormwater and parks. And then the transportation fee is pretty significant also. You don't currently have stormwater, parks, and transportation SDCs, so these would be new fees. The Oregon statutes allow for cities to assess SDCs for all five of these systems, and their necessary components of the infrastructure funding plan. The total you can see at the bottom is close to $20,000. This is for a typical single-family residential dwelling unit. It represents the maximum that you can assess, and it, you are not compelled to immediately charge that fee. You can, it's up to your discretion whether to potentially phase that in over multiple years. Okay, next slide, please. So this gives you a snapshot of where you are currently, at the very bottom of the list, of the comparative cities here in this. This was a survey that was available from, I believe, it was either League of Oregon Cities or the Oregon Builders Building Officials Association. And these SDCs are a couple of years old. These these broad surveys aren't done every year, but it gives you a sense that you've been on the very lowest end, in part because you're only charging sewer and water SDCs right now. And most other cities have SDCs for all five systems. If you were to adopt the max today, based on the numbers in this chart, that would move you to the center, just just above the average. The average total is is close to 19,000, and as I mentioned, the total that we've calculated is close to 20,000. Next slide, please. Okay. Yeah, and you can just click a couple of times there. Important to understand that, that's perfect. The, so the adoption of the methodology, the the statutes speak to how the process, not only of how we determine the SDCs, but the process for adopting and modifying SDCs going forward. So we went through the process, the city went through the process of identifying or providing notification of its intent to consider new SDCs. And if you adopt the methodology, as I said, you can adopt the methodology to establish the ceiling, the the maximum for the SDCs. And then you can, through separate resolutions, determine what the fees are going to be each year up to that ceiling. Once you are at charging the maximum, or whatever you determine to be what you're going to charge going forward, you can automatically adjust those every year to keep pace with inflation. The costs that we've identified and built the SDCs on are $20,000. And some of these projects don't occur till years out. So if you don't adjust these for inflation, you won't be keeping pace with the actual costs of construction. So the SDC law allows you to make modifications that aren't considered a change in the methodology, just to recognize construction cost increases over time. You can also update the project lists at any time. And you don't have to do a public hearing if you're just making modifications to the project list without changing the fee. And that, and that's part because you you need to keep your project list current, because you are limited to how you can spend SDCs to the projects that are on the project list that you adopt. So you're really adopting kind of a package of things. The methodology, which establishes the ceiling of of the fees, the actual fee schedules, and any phase-in plan that you deem appropriate. And then project lists for each system that show the planned projects and how you intend to to spend the money. So you need to keep all of those current. It's. It's... There are some administrative requirements associated with having these fees, and that's in part what the compliance fees are intended to help you to pay for some of that ongoing compliance with the statutes. So, I believe that was... I think if you go to the next slide, the end of the presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
At this time, any councilors have any questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. What does periodic mean? Can we define periodic? Where you said periodic inflationary adjustments?
So generally, that's an annual adjustment. Most cities will adopt, will state in a resolution that... Which index they're going to use, and it has to be an index that's used for things other than SDCs, so like a consumer price index, or more commonly, a construction cost index. So, the engineering news record, construction cost index is a very common basis for adjusting SDCs annually. So oftentimes, it's, you know, every July 1, when you adopt your master fee schedule, you would have... You would adjust your SDCs also to reflect that, the change in that index from the prior year. So it's usually an annual adjustment.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, so you projected or wanted to go to $20,000? Is that what it was, or was it 19-something? Your recommendation, your numbers, you came up with 19,000 and some whatever.
$19,880, I think, was the total. That's the maximum allowable, right?
So my question is, if we go a five-year thing, and we raise that every year for however much money we decide, in five years, are we going to be way behind again? I know you can't project that, but, I mean, are we going to be in the same place again in five years that we've been the last 40 years, or whatever? I don't know how long it's been.
Well, you'll lose... You know, you will have been assessing development that occurs during that period a lower fee, so you will have lost the opportunity to have full cost recovery from that increment of development that occurs during the phase-in. If you do the phase-in where... And then the other... So that's one issue. But if you... But then the next 15 years, say, you're charging the full freight, then, you know, at least you're keeping pace at that point. The other issue is the inflationary factor. So if you do the phase-in based on these numbers alone in $20,000, and then by year five, what you've adopted is the 2020 SDC, then yeah, you're going to be behind, both in terms of inflation and in terms of not having assessed it, the full SDC on development that's already occurred.
So we could possibly leave the next counselor, council, and we could leave them the same mess they're... Not mess, but the same situation we're in right now. Possibly.
Can I answer that question?
Can I ask her?
Well, if we can tag team. So, when you think of this, I'll use your words, the same mess. The SDCs that we've been charging are roughly $1,800, and it's only to water and wastewater. And those have been in place for the last 20 years. So, that's a pretty low amount, and that's not even covering transportation parks or stormwater. What we're doing, and if you do what we've talked about in previous meetings, and I believe it was, assuming we go with like a $15,000 is what we're aiming to get to, it's still a huge improvement over what we have been doing. Now, can you go further? Of course you can. You can go up to this... The reason why we have moved forward with this number in the methodology is not that we were expecting it to be adopted, but because we're recommending you give yourselves the full flexibility that it offers to say this, because this is more permission to charge that much, not you're going... Not an insistence that you're going to, right? It's just flexibility, basically. So, I think we'll be in a better position. The other thing to keep in mind is that, in the past, I don't think we funded a single project entirely from SDCs. There's always been other funding sources that we've tried to use. And yes, we would like SDCs to cover those costs as much as possible, but we recognize that that's not likely.
Mr. Mayor, so, we don't have to raise them every year. Is that not correct? We can bypass them, we don't have to do it. We can set a number, but in three years, we do not have to raise that up. Is that not correct?
You can raise them to whatever you want up to the amount that the methodology allows you to. So yeah, it's within your power to do that.
Right.
And just to be clear on the purposes of this public hearing, is simply to look at the methodology and hear input from the public and decide whether this methodology is correct. We will later bring a resolution that will actually set the fees.
Okay.
And so there certainly is more time to discuss how that's going to be done.
Okay.
But if you want to talk about it now, that's fine with me, too.
No, I can wait. But just one more question. Is there anything that we... That you'd recommend that we add onto that five list? Is there something we... Is it... Is this basically what we're allowed to do, those five things? I'm just asking, I don't know for sure.
By law, you can only have SDCs in these five areas.
Okay.
You can choose to do fewer, but you can't do more.
Okay. Okay. I'm done.
Well, you know, what's funny is when we looked at these, the mythology, and we thought, well, we want to be careful and don't get too aggressive. But in the last couple of months, talking to developers and, you know, looking at, talking to other individuals within the other cities, and I'm mind-boggled at what they're charging and where it's going. So, we may not with this mythology, we may not be too aggressive. We may be just right there, too. So, something to think about, so.
That's true. The other thing to keep in mind is that everything that... Because of the way this is structured with what needs to be adopted and when, you can choose to modify part of it at a later time, and you don't have to go through the whole process necessarily. So with the adopted methodology, you know, this is the maximum that you're allowed to. If you change your minds later, or the situation in the city with the pace of development and costs and all those things, if those go in a different direction than you think, you have the freedom of doing another resolution at a later time to revise the fees up or down, depending on what you think is best for the community.
Mr. Mayor, but Blair, is that... Does that peak us at that $19,000, whatever it is?
Oh, yeah, you're still limited. That $19,000, it can only grow by inflation.
Okay. So if we did $25,000, I'm just throwing out numbers, then we could go to that point and not have to go through this process again?
The only way you'd be able to get beyond $19,000, I believe, and Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, the only way you could get beyond $19,000 is either inflation puts you there, and it's documented, or you go through this methodology process again.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Or you add projects to your list. So some of the, you know, I think the system plans for, like for wastewater, you've got a pretty comprehensive list of what you're facing. The other systems, like transportation, not so much. I think that you'll likely be identifying additional projects over whatever phase-in period that you are using, that at some point you may want to add to the list, and that would absolutely drive up the cost.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. I think, maybe to clarify, you know, when we set our water and sewer fees, we have the magic spreadsheet, which has the formula. I think that's what you're doing right now, is you're developing that magic spreadsheet. So you're developing the formula and approving the formula, and as the work we identify increases or decreases, these dollar amounts can change. And if that happens, if we go through, and that's why we'll annually adopt the CIP, and Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, as we review our CIP and make changes to it, that will change the numbers in the "magic spreadsheet" air quotes for the SDCs, and so that number will fluctuate with whatever we... Whatever you, as a council, determine as needed projects. Does that help? Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I... We'll get into this later, but so, I don't see... I can't see, as I've thought about this quite a bit, I don't see why we just don't take the maximum to 19-whatever it is, and then just choose not to go that high. Rather than have to go back through this again, if that's what it takes, I just... It doesn't make... It doesn't make much sense to not get in the area where we could be or should be possibly, and not take the advantage... Just like, anyway, you know, and not have to go through this whole process again, and maybe never get to that $19,000 in our term, but maybe later on, they might get to that point. And I would hate to... I'd hate to kind of push them down and not be able to go when... You know, we've been really, really, really bad behind. I mean, awful. It's just, it's awful. I'd like to see us, in my opinion, okay? I think that we should put the maximum in instead of the $15,000, and use it, and raise it as we feel is necessary. And that's just me, I changed my mind on that some, and so, anyway, thanks.
Right, right. What you're making a decision after this public meeting, what you will need to decide when it comes to this methodology, is whether you're adopting this methodology, if you're adopting this formula. And this, the way it's structured right now, it gives you the flexibility to choose at a later, when you adopt the fees, how high up you're going to go.
I agree with you, I think that... And I didn't get Lebanon's recent, you know, I've talked to some of the Lebanon there, they're looking at doing their change. And I didn't get their number, what they're looking at changing to, but I know Monmouth and Independence and Falmouth, you know, when I compare it to the other cities, I have to agree, we may want to go to the max, and then adjust accordingly.
So it looks like there's a question from... You can go back to the bar graph in the presentation.
Deb, we have a guest that's asking why the bar graph only shows those that are greater than us. Are there any that are lower than we are?
Let me take off mute, sorry. There are very few. I was actually, it's funny you brought up Lebanon, because I was on... They are, right now, I'm working with them on their transport, updating their transportation SDCs, and just yesterday, we had a citizen advisory committee meeting, and in that meeting, we're reviewing some other comparisons, and there was one... I'm trying to just pull it up on my spreadsheet here, but there was one, I think, that was 900. So, yeah, I think, but again, most of those that are... If there's any that are lower, it's because in part that they're not charging for all five systems. So, this is a pretty good representative... This is representative of what we see across the state, and yes, there are a handful that are lower, but they weren't in this survey that we had used previously.
In terms of population on that graph, there are at least a couple that are smaller than Sweet Home. Adour Village is on there.
Mr. Mayor, Falmouth is on there, they're half our size, and theirs are higher than what we're max is represented on that graph.
I just looked up Lebanon's, and it... They have them all separated, so I'm not doing the math real quick, but it's around $13,000 right now for a single-family home.
Yeah, I... That's right, that's exactly right, yes. And we've calculated the updated transportation SDC, and that would put them around $17,000, but they haven't adopted that yet. That is going through the process like you are going through.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to. I didn't have the number in front of me, but you said 17. I was thinking it was a little higher than that, but I stand corrected, but yeah, I knew they were a lot more than that.
And just to reinforce the importance of this, of paying for this infrastructure, you can't build a single-family home in Lebanon right now, because they don't have the sewer capacity. And so, they're overdue on that infrastructure, we don't want to be in that situation.
Any other questions, councilors? I don't see anything on the screen. Do we have any questions of anybody in the audience on the internet?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any additional questions online at this time.
Well, go ahead and move on to testimony, any additional applicant testimony? Testimony in favor, testimony for those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Testimony in the opposition, testimonial wishing to speak in the opposition of the application.
My application, you mean the against the methodology?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify for those listening in.
This is the verbiage on this, I'm pulling just verbiage.
Okay.
Neutral, this was neither in favor nor in opposition of this application. I'll open up for any rebuttal. If there's no rebuttal at 6:19, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll go ahead and do any...
Update to our SDC ordinance, which is necessary because our previous ordinance only had water and wastewater. We had to add the other SDCs, and there were some discrepancies with it in state law that had to be cleared up and ironed out. So, once that is adopted, so we have a... If we have a first reading tonight, and then a second reading at the next council meeting, and then a third meeting, or third reading, when that third reading occurs, we can then adopt the resolutions that will put in place our capital improvement plan, and our adopt this methodology officially in the resolution, and then also set the rates. And so, at that time, they would be effective, it would... Well, I think we have 30 days after the ordinance is adopted before it becomes effective, but it'd be 30 days after that that those would kick in, essentially. We'll have all that worded out. So not the next meeting, but the meeting after that, we could have everything voted on and done, and then it would be effective 30 days after that.
Councilors, anything else? We'll take a brief recess and wait for the city council meeting to start at 6:30.